You all set? Joe? You good? All right. Seven o'clock, off we go. This meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, posted on municipal bulletin board. All notices are on file with the Planning Board Secretary. Fire exits are located on east and west sides of the council chambers, as well as the rear of the building. I would ask anyone with a cellphone or other device to kindly put it on silent mode for the duration of meeting. And just a reminder that this meeting is being recorded by AP TV. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
September 24, 2018, 7:00 p.m. Councilwoman E. Lynn Claker.
Here.
Mayor John Moore.
Here.
Mayor Ann Tauri.
Here.
Michael Manzella.
Here.
Tony Farillo.
Here.
Trudy Syfak.
Here.
Eric Clapper.
Here.
Barbara Crizac.
Here.
Senator Henry.
Here.
Allison McLeod.
Here.
Do our holiday.
All right, there, according to what we have on the agenda at this point, there aren't any modifications. There will be one to move. Do we do that now, Barbara, or do we wait?
Yes, I heard from the attorney.
This is for the 9/10 Fourth Avenue?
Yeah, 9/10 Fourth would like to be carried to October 22.
Okay.
I've reviewed the notices, they're in proper form.
They're in proper form? Okay, and that's to when, October?
22nd.
22nd.
10/22, okay.
I move that we carry...
Whoa.
It's loud. I move that we carry the application, 9/10 Fourth Avenue, to October 22.
So without further notice?
Without further notice, thank you.
Second.
Go on, favor.
Hi.
Okay, at this point, we don't have... The minutes will be provided in the following meeting, so let's go into the review and adoption of amendments to the municipal master plan. Who is presenting that? That'd be you.
I do. I'm the city manager. That says it's off. I know, it says it's off. Thank you, everyone, for having me tonight. As part of... Does that mean crackling? As part of the DEP process, in order to clean the beach, one of the aspects that you must have for an individual... A general permit is the municipal public access plan. Over the last two years, DEP actually changed the requirements of the plan, and we are the first municipality in the state, according to DEP, that has completed the public access plan to their new standards. The plan itself needs to be adopted as part of the master plan in order for DEP to accept it. With every planning document, it is a plan, it's a goal, it's an idea. Excuse me. So, in a nutshell, what the plan says is, we hired a consultant, it was T&amp;M, to go through the process of identifying all our parks, open spaces, and where we can do a better job of providing access. How do you get to places, almost like a mock signage report? And the goals of creating more accessibility for the city, for the residents and visitors, to identify how we get there. By adopting this into the reexamination report into the master plan, it allows us also to get the cheaper permit to clean the beach. For many years, the city has been void of that requirement. The average cost is $25,000, but if this is adopted, it drops down to $1,000. So this plan, as it's presented, has actually been approved by DEP. So any major changes to it, we actually have to go back through the DEP process. I know you've been provided copies of the plan, this time it's a plan of basically improving signage and access. It does not call for any capital improvements, it just says how we can get to where we want to go. So at this time, if there's any questions, please feel free to ask.
Now, just a matter of understanding of what we have to do here. Is this something... If we have to... If we're looking to add this as an amendment to the master plan, what has to happen? And I guess I'm going to our professionals for that.
You have to prepare a prompt notice, those 10 days prior, ship to contiguous clerks of close contiguous municipalities. Send you a copy of the memo that I sent to Barbara and everybody. Anytime we do master plan changes, I always send the same memo, just change the dates, because it's always the same process. And that's it. Notify 10 days prior, over hearing, come in, have a legislative type hearing, you don't need to have Capabianco back, no changes, as the papers they have to say, and then just adopt it, and adopt the resolution, and all to go.
All right, so that's the next... Those are the next steps after we ask any questions here. Okay.
Do we have to have a separate meeting, or can it be done in conjunction with an existing...
Be done on an agenda, as an agenda item. I'm not going to take it long, because there's no reason to dedicate all that time and money to someone.
Okay. Anybody have any questions here on the board? Everybody's okay? All right. And I guess that we're going to have to... So who does notice now? Barbara, you'll do, you'll take care of noticing and whatnot for this?
Yeah, I mean, usually I do it, but it's up to the city manager.
Yeah, as long as it gets done.
Okay.
Don't change anything.
Yeah, I'll take a look at it, put it up against the notice requirements in the memo, and she has a number of the notices we've done in the past, so just take one.
All right, so then we'll probably try it for the 22nd. Is that within reason? Okay.
Does that work on you for time?
Yeah.
Time is all right? Okay. So we're not closed?
Yeah, DEP's approved, as long as there's no major structural changes.
There's a time constraint.
No.
Yeah, there's no time constraint?
Nope.
Okay, so let's do it for the 22nd, if we can? Because we already have an application for the 22nd, let's see if we can make that happen.
There's no other reason because it's the holidays, so it's a little longer of a stretch.
Yeah, it's October 22nd, it's our next meeting. Okay. All right. I guess we're done.
Jack, do I need to...
Do we need to do anything?
No.
No? We're good.
Because you're not taking formal action tonight, you're going to put it down as an agenda item, 22nd of October, all the notices are out, maybe next week or so, so if you don't have more than enough time, you're done.
Okay, cool. All right.
Make sure we count the air office with everything we can.
Thank you.
You ready for the next item? Report and recommendation of amendments to chapter... The chapter of the municipal code, Asbury Park zoning ordinance.
Shall you swear as a manager of the several applications listed?
Do you swear that you are going to give your decision with the truth, the whole truth, and not the judgment?
I do.
Take the name and your salary.
Michael Capabianco, city manager.
Thank you.
So, thank you. Thank you again for having me tonight for the second hearing application. This one is a little bit more important, and a little bit more sensitive to the city's needs. So earlier this year, myself and a group of people inclusive of Madam Chairwoman and the Chair of the Zoning Board sat down with city staff, as we wanted to look at the ordinances and the checklists to streamline some of our approaches. One of the reputations that the city has, whether it's true or not, is that we're not development-friendly, we're not cohesive on our internal operations, and there's always a disjointed effort somewhere in the process. So we sat down with a bunch of us internally, and over the next two or three months, formulated the ordinance that you see before you tonight, for referral back to the city council, who has approved this unanimously on introduction. There's two, three parts of this. The simplest part is Section 30-49, which is Performance and Maintenance Guarantees, which is at the back, which makes up the eight pages or so. This is a change in state law. The state changed the performance guarantees, which actually harms municipalities in January, so this is us keeping up with the law. It impacts us negatively, because it takes out items that we could previously require for performance and maintenance bonds. For example, trees aren't covered as much as they used to be. So if previously, if someone did a project, in two years, if that tree died, we can go after the bond, or they would be required to fix it, that's now gone. This also reduced the amount of the percentage under the bond, and changed the timelines that we can keep and hold on to money to make sure things were done. So this was, quite honestly, written by the building community and approved by the Christie administration, went through the rulemaking process. This is us updating our law that we have to do. And as you'll notice, somewhere in here, I don't remember where I put it, it's actually in the general, as per Public Law 2017, Chapter 312, Senate Number 3233, that is the actual reference. So what we've been doing internally is, when we have something that's based upon a state regulation, the state law, is we actually try to put it in our city code, so we know where it's coming from, and the changes happened. For example, that just happened with stormwater... With, I'm sorry, sanitary sewer connection fees. If you look at that ordinance, you'll see that reference too. So we know where things are coming from, and not just doing it. Everything from this section on is just tweaking the state law to change the verbiage to comply with us. The second aspect is Chapter 2. That is the personnel section of the city code, and as you see in the redlined version, this actually requires the Director of Planning to have a license, which is required under civil service in the state. Previously, the city code didn't allow it, so you could technically have a Director of Planning who wasn't a certified planner, which makes absolutely no sense. So we wanted to change that. There's a major change in this section also. If you look at 2-17 dot 2B... I'm sorry, 2-17.3 Functions of the Department, it tells you who will be in charge if there is no Director. Right now, our ordinance was silent on that. It was hit or miss. And then we also added a section that... For municipal review. If you see an F receipt, completeness review, processing of all development or redevelopment applications, it actually didn't go internal. So while a lot of the checklist had said the fire department might review it, we actually didn't have the enabling ordinance for those things to be completely reviewed. The checklist said it, but now we're actually creating the redundancy in the ordinances that are needed, to make it stronger. Lastly, and this was a big one, is that when you looked at the city code, there was terms as development coordinator, economic development coordinator, and administrative officer. Each one with different appointing authorities, some of which would violate the Faulkner Act, because it was an internal staff. For example, one position was appointed by the mayor and council, which is the city manager appointment. And the economic development coordinator, no one knows what that position was, or had been, if there ever was one, but that person actually would spearhead and walk an application through a process, which, again, you have multiple people doing the same thing, getting an application from staff to here before planning or zoning. So one of the biggest changes is it actually puts the position of Director of Planning and Redevelopment as that officer. So all applications will now go before the Director of Planning and Redevelopment for completeness, before it goes to the Board Secretary. There is no more disjointedness that we've experienced. This creates one person to handle the applications. We think that is a major and much-needed change to get rid of just some of the confusion that had happened. Now, you know, Barbara won't get something, it goes to one person. There's... It's one person who has to review for completeness. And we strengthened also the completeness review language, because what's happened in the past, we've heard this... I'll be here for three years in November. We've heard from... I've heard from members of this board, I've heard from members of the public, I've heard from members of the zoning board, the application wasn't complete. You should not hear a non-complete application. It just wastes everyone's time. If the application doesn't meet the checklist requirements, don't hear it. So this actually puts more teeth into what's happening, is you're not wasting your time, you're volunteers. If something is not complete, it should not be here. So this actually adds more teeth to that. We also did a bunch of cleanup. For example, there was the language of certificate of compliance. What really did that mean when we started digging into it? So is that really a zoning permit, or is that a certificate of resolution compliance? A compliance from something that the boards had given? Here's the resolution, 23 things they had to do. We broke that out, so it's easier, and gave it one title. The fee did not change, it's still $20, but it allows now for everything to be compliant. Is this fence compliant? Yes. Is this land development application compliant? Yes. It's now compliant and not a permit. We also tightened up the internal controls for construction or mercantile. That requires now, it spelled it out more clear, that if you're going for a mercantile license, you have to have that compliance, so that we know that you are operating legally. And that was cleaned up in Section 7.2. And in 7.3, it's the same thing. It requires you to have compliance. There's also, one of the things that you just talked about, was the extensions. For example, in 23.8, Meeting Attendance of Applicants, we heard this a lot from the zoning board. "If an application is scheduled to be heard, the applicant shall notify the Board Secretary a minimum of two business days before the scheduled hearing date. If said applicant desires to postpone the hearing, and this must be in writing. In addition, the applicant, at the discretion of the Chair, is required to have a representative appear before the Board to state for the official record why the postponement is requested. The Board may, at its discretion, grant the postponement or deny the application without prejudice. The Board may, at its discretion, require a re-notification of the application as a postponement." From the council side, we've had a couple people... A couple instances where people have complained to us of, "Well, that application started nine months ago, how did I know it was still going?" This solves, gives the Board an option to say, "We want you to re-notify." If there has been nine months, and it's because people aren't showing, their professionals aren't coming, you can sit there and say, "You should re-notify. You're volunteers, we have to pay the people to my left to be here, it's not fair to anyone if someone's postponing at the last minute." It just creates an avenue, it's permissive, so you have the option. We're not saying it's law, but if you've had an application that keeps going on and on and on, you give the option to do that. And then, that section is 23.8 and 29.2, so that it does require the notifications, which again, is helpful. And the last thing is internal operations. It's a copy of the compliance certification, should be transmitted to the construction official by the Director of Planning and Redevelopment. So that actually creates another internal step. If the Board Secretary... The Board Secretary would give it to staff, because the Board Secretary is technically outside of staff's purview, gives it to staff, the Director reviews it before sending it over to the construction code official. So we don't have a disjointedness of Board working with construction, it now goes up internally through a channel of least resistance. And so that the planning director knows what's going on, because then, for escrow payments. And then also in here, speaking of escrow payments, that the certificate, the compliance certificate cannot be issued until all bills are paid. If you saw in the last, before Hiron Gruel left, they submitted us with past due bills dating back to 2012 or 2013, I believe, that we had to pay, but those projects were closed out, and what person in their right mind's going to say? Sure, well, let's give you extra money for a project that we closed out three years ago. That just makes no sense, but now we have at least an accounting method that might slow a payment for a month or two, which complies with the escrow law, but we want to make sure that the city's not spending money, because we had to pay Hiron Gruel, I think it was $5,600 for outstanding bills, that all should have been escrowed over the years. So this puts in a financial step to protect the city and the Board's interests moving forward. So those are the big changes, that we're trying to improve the internal operations, speed things up. We know you guys are volunteers, we shouldn't... You shouldn't be coming here if there's no meeting, at least give you guys some notification. And to help the public with notification, that you guys have permissively the ability to do something else. Any questions so far?
Will the new Director of Planning be a new hire?
No, that's Michelle Alonso currently.
He will be, Michelle, she is licensed.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. But she doesn't have that title now?
No, she has a title. Her title's Director of Planning and Redevelopment. But in the personnel portion of the section, you didn't have to have a license.
Oh.
Which I don't understand why.
I got a question about... I understand that in 30-7.3, that it's zoning permit or certificate of resolution for new use or new occupancy. But for new construction, do... Because I'm not as familiar with the whole process, do they need both to get a construction permit?
Yes.
Should we say "and" instead of "or" there?
I can see that. I'll do "and" slash "or," and it'll cover everything.
What's that revision?
30-7.2, Application for a zoning permit and/or certificate of resolution compliance. Because I'd be afraid that someone would get one and not the other, and then be able to get a construction permit.
Any more?
Well, we're on 30-7.3, there's a period where there should not be one. There should be just one sentence after certificate of resolution.
30-7.3?
Oh, yes.
Okay, I see what you're talking about. Remove.
Now, Jack, what do we... What do we have to do with this situation?
Well, we're just under our U. powers, though. Any development regulations, zoning ordinance, in the White has to be... It's going to be adopted by the mayor and council. Has to be forwarded to the planning board for a report.
Okay.
Comment, recommendations, and so on. And usually catch all phrases and consistencies of the master plan.
Right, right.
And that's basically usually the comments or recommendations sent back. And I happen to have one.
Okay.
Before, and Michael's considered. If I read it, hearing the language correctly, there's a minimum of a two-day notification to the Chair for a request for an adjournment. Okay? I would recommend that not be in there, because a lot of times, you will get a call one or two days before, or day of, my planner can't make it, I can't do it, a sick child, something like that. Not saying that's going to be the rule, but it happens. And if that statute or the ordinance goes through as that, then nobody has the power to grant that adjournment unless it's been requested two days prior. So I think there should be a flexibility. Because it's... And it's not just something that's discretionary. If it's just somebody calling and saying, "I'm just not going to show up," that's a different story. But there are times when attorneys will call me that their planner's coming from Lower Jersey, there's snow, there's this. A million things can happen. Kids get sick, they can't do anything. So I would suggest that you give the Chair the discretion, day up, up to one, at least one day prior. Or if you... If you, once again, if you think of the scenario that on the day of the hearing, the attorney calls and says, "Look, my client's stuck in New York, can't get down," and so on and so forth, "I can't make it, and I have nobody to present to me." So what do you do? You say, "I can't give you your adjournment." You're going to say, "You've got to come in, or we're going to dismiss."
Do you think that's covered under the Board may, at its discretion, grant the postponement or deny the application without prejudice?
Only no, because it says the request has to be made no less than two days prior to the period. That's good language that you have right there, but the two-day requirement doesn't always work.
Well, actually, while I get what you're saying, my concern would be that I would want more, because two days is Sunday for us, or Saturday is for us.
That's his Monday.
Two days is Saturday for us, because we're... We meet on Mondays.
Well, it says business days.
But actually, you should have less, because I've... In 40 years that I've practiced this type of law, there's plenty of times where you get situations where people, the day of, something happens. And if you leave that strict language in there, then you, as a Chairperson, would be without power to grant that adjournment. So you're telling them that they have to come in and proceed, but they, without witnesses, how are they going to proceed?
Right, right.
So I think you should have the flex... I'm not saying you grant the adjournment at the 11th hour, but you should have the discretion to do so based on what the circumstances are regarding the request.
Does the language prevent the adjournment? If they don't come in two days? I don't think...
The language says that the request has to be made within two days of the day of the hearing. So effectively speaking, it would have to be made on the Friday before.
Two business days, so it's Thursday before.
So Thursday before. That doesn't... In the real world, it doesn't work.
But then does it say the adjournment won't be granted if you don't follow that?
Yes.
It says that specifically?
Well, you can't entertain the adjournment. So you have to say no, you have to proceed.
Does it say that?
Yes, it does. By the language itself, it gives you... It gives the Chair the power, the discretion, to grant the adjournment, based on circumstances. But there's a date certain on which you have to have the request made. If you don't make the deadline, then you're violating the ordinance if you granted a adjournment on the Friday or the Monday.
Right, the emergency one, 30A.
So all I'm suggesting is, is that the two days should be... It should not be in there. It should be based... It should be based on the circumstances, and it should be at the discretion of the Board. There's going to be an opportunity for the public to comment. You usually do legislative type hearings, you go up to the public. Michael's going to speak, he has to be under room. I as the attorney, I guess they don't expect me to tell the truth.
So let's also...
Let's get Michael under room.
Well, before we... We haven't finished you yet, so...
Right. No, I think Michael has to comment on what I'm saying. I'm sure that he has his...
Oh, well, we'll give him an opportunity to speak if it's... Is it on this topic? I mean, is this on this statement?
No, Michael Sullivan.
I'm talking about Michael.
Oh, Michael Sullivan.
Michael Sullivan.
There are too many Michaels here. Okay, go for it.
And I'm...
But he has to be sworn.
Right.
Do you want to swear, friend, you just want to get 30 statements, will be the truth, the whole truth, and not the judgment?
Yes.
Say your name and your affiliation of the city, please.
Michael Sullivan, Plankton, Hints, Board Planner.
Thank you.
I tend to agree with Jack. I think that the Board has that discretion that you're talking about already. I think this is just really a notification that you put in there. And, you know, the practicality of it is that if for some reason someone didn't do it, and you deny it without prejudice, you'd fairly... I don't know if it's be for you, but I think you'd be on the wrong side of that if somebody challenged it. And it would be a big administrative hassle. And I'm an expense. I have, for example, I can recall a specific instance, George McGill, appears before, so a number of occasions. He... Son or daughter was at BU. The day of the hearing, something happened up in Boston with one of his kids, and he called and said that he was beside his son. I didn't get the facts of it, but it sure sounded serious. He had to take off to Boston. That was Monday or Tuesday, I don't... I forget which Board he was on.
Right.
But if you have the two-day rule, and you say, "Well, jeez, the ordinance doesn't give us the flexibility to say, 'Okay, we won't proceed, and we'll give you the adjournment,' because it requires you to have the notification requesting the adjournment for at least two business days." So I think the smarter move is to leave it at the discretion of the Chair and the Board. But the thing that could be done is in the application package, that could be some guidance that's put into the application package for people who might not know that or might not recognize it, that that's really what you're doing. You're doing it in an ordinance, but it's really something that you want to guide people on, and that you don't want to be putting yourself or them into a situation where you get disarbitrarily, two-day situation. I get it. The intent is great, you know, you're sure, we'd rather know Thursday what our agenda's going to look like, rather than wait till the last minute and things get all disconnected and so on. But there are circumstances, a 40-year period, I can... There's tons of them, that things woke them up at the last minute that do require a request things woke them up at the last minute that do require a request for an adjournment.
Could you change the language to, if an application is scheduled to be heard, the applicant shall, to the best of their ability, notify the applicant?
Notify the board.
Well, it's, I'm sorry, yes, notify the board secretary.
Okay, yeah, shall, to the best of their ability, does that. So that gives you the flexibility that if you don't get it within two days, you still have some discretion.
Right, because I read the rest of the, the piece here, and it does leave the discretion to the board to still postpone.
Yeah.
No matter what.
Yeah, all it is, is that time constraint, that's all I'm trying to avoid.
Yeah.
And you'll decide, you know, being hoodwinked, you say no.
That's, the dog ate my homework.
That never, didn't work in Mount Mount Brown school.
You haven't met my dog, she will eat the homework.
Anything else from our professionals about this?
I mean, and if, you know, obviously, there's the public that they want to speak here, but in terms of the master plan consistency review, this is very unusual. I mean, this is, this is procedural stuff. There's nothing in the master plan that talks about procedural stuff, and there's nothing inconsistent with the master plan, with this procedural type of regulation being done. So there's the, I don't think there's any recommendations that I could say are working system, or indicate that it's inconsistent. So that's, that's where I come from in terms of the master plan.
Yeah, you're going to be ahead of it on this one, because Michael's taking the notes down, so we don't have to prepare the written resolution in October, give to him to make the changes to the product. Whatever you're recommending, if they're going to change, they're going to change. Mayor and council have the option to follow.
Follow the recommendation or not.
Yeah, I have no problems with anything that's been proposed.
Anything else from the board?
Yeah, all right.
Yes.
In going through this, there are still inconsistencies. It needs a good review again, one more time, to make sure that where, where references made to one particular function, that five or six pages later on, it needs to be the same reference, and there's still some inconsistencies in there. And towards the, back in towards the guarantee section, there are some references that are inconsistent with the board, attorney, I'm sorry, board engineer, city engineer, that needs to be made totally at discretion. So it needs to be, it has to have another review.
You're talking about, through the guarantee section?
Yeah, and that guarantee section, again, has to refer back to the earlier sections to make sure that all is consistent.
All right, so, so you're talking about the titles of the people that are not consistent?
Well, yes, yeah. You know, so this reads consistently throughout the whole document as to who it is to refer it. And towards the end of the document, you get into a situation where it's somewhat confusing, especially as the public service takes, this is the city engineers, the board engineers, the zoning board engineers, that needs to be made consistent. Now, we'll go through and try to get you, you know, specifics as to page and that type of thing.
No, that would, that would be very helpful. Is there anything, anybody else have, before we go to public? Anybody from the public? Is this a swearing-in situation?
He's a fake attorney.
So you don't have to, even if he's part of the public?
You're a gentleman, I assume? That is correct. So, no.
Okay.
Good evening, Andrew Charis, you have the Sacman Enterprises, term of office, or I shall. There are a number of comments I'd like to make with regard to the proposed ordinance. Jack hit it right on the head with one of the comments, I'll be getting to that. Just starting in the beginning, today at seventeen point three F, discuss this completeness review. On a developer viewpoint, there have been significant issues with completeness review, and I certainly appreciate the board, how difficult it is when you get an application and it's not complete. Well, one of the problems that developers are having is that they're submitting applications that, for the most part, or for the entire part, are in compliance with the checklist, then you get requests of items that are beyond what is within that checklist. And you want to try to provide as much information as possible, try to get your application ready and fully, so continually you're giving additional information. But it gets to a point sometimes, they get bogged down, have a tough time getting an application before the board, because information is being requested that far exceeds what is within the checklist. The other problem you have is that you might get a request for certain information, maybe you did miss something, maybe it's relatively minor with regard to something that's on the plan. You correct that, you submit new plans. Then you get back a letter or email and say, oh, there's something else. Problem is that it's taking, you have that thirty-day period to give the completeness review. Okay, you get that first comment three weeks in after you submit the application. Then it takes another thirty days, once that additional information is provided for, again, completeness review to be adopted. And then you get another small comment, and then you're pushed back another thirty days until you're spending time. I think there should be something in there that, relative to completeness review, that a letter should go out detailing all items within that responsive letter to the application, indicating what is not complete, so we don't get faced with the situation. You submit something, another thirty days go by, or right before that end period, you get another letter that something is incomplete, and it just takes a ridiculous amount of time to get an application before it. So I think an amendment should be put in there to that effect, that one letter should come back indicating everything that's incomplete, and also that completeness review should be limited to what's mandated by the municipal land use law, and also to the checklist that happened to form, formulated by the city as part of the ordinance. Continuing on, you have in there thirty dash seven point one, requirement zoning officer to issue, talks about no building or structure may be erected or altered. And then it continues with regard to requirements of design, perimeter, certificate of resolution compliance. What does somebody, what does altered mean? And that's one of the problems, there's too much that is subject to interpretation. Somebody's changing work, they're refinishing floors, they're repeating. If that's considered an alteration, they'd be a violation of deception. I think it has to be identified or defined more clearly, so we don't run into that situation where people are doing relatively minor things to a building, but they're being told they're in violation of the ordinance, because they have not received a zoning permit, certificate of resolution compliance, which allows them to do those kind of things. Continuing on, you have in there thirty dash seven point three, necessary prior to new occupancy or new use, and talks about the requirement that your construction permit or cadillac license is not required, then for any new occupancy or new use, you have to get a zoning permit or a certificate of resolution. What is also, what does that mean by new occupancy? Again, there are too many things in here that leaves it open to discretion that are way too wide. New occupancy, child moves back home, baby is born, is that new occupancy? Or is it a change of occupancy from what had been there previously? I think that has to be defined to take away that discretion in relation to some. With regard to the notice provision in thirty dash twenty-three point eight, I had a situation years ago before the board, I go to a hearing, and my wife went into labor. I had a choice, do I go home and take her to the hospital, do I go ahead and be here? Fortunately, I was allowed to go home and take her to the hospital, but those situations still occur. You know, I know most attorneys do try to go ahead and prepare their application, get it ready to be heard enough to take it tonight, but we have all been faced with a situation where you have a planner, architect, engineer, something happens, they're not able to make a meeting, or whatever the situation may be. The other problem that we face also is, a lot of times, we get reports just the Friday before we have a hearing. We have a hearing on Monday or a Tuesday night, got to get those reports over to our experts to review. And at times, there are things in that report that warrant, that revisions be made that would make going before a board to have a hearing really a waste of time. And if you're getting, under the way this is written, if you get that report on that Friday before a hearing date, you're really in a no-one position where you have to go before the board, but you know that it's, you're wasting your time, because revisions have to be made by that late report. So I think the language that you propose, I think is absolutely correct, to revise and give the board the discretion on the day of the hearing, to allow for an adjournment. Lastly, going to thirty dash twenty-nine point two, section four, where it reads that any other time the board share required a notice reported of an application here under other act, board can sit for the application or renotice in the interest of the public. That's violated by the municipal land use law. Municipal land use law is very specific in terms of what is required with regard to notice. You know, it's not cheap. When you send out notice, you have to send out the certified mail-in between the labor and the cost to get that all out in publication. It's not an easy thing to do. Municipal land use law is very specific as to what is required with regard to notice. Anything beyond that, you're in violation of the mandate by the state law. That's all I have. Reports information in a scenario, information, in a scenario where an app strings out an application, months upon months. Typically, what will happen is, you don't acquire the notice, what you're going to do is just say, all right, this is the last time we're going to get this application to adjournment. You don't come in here with, on this date, we're going to decide the application. Court, what I had in before four or two here in town, Long Branch when I was there, Highlands when I was there, is that for lack of prosecution, an application was dismissed without prejudice. Once it's dismissed, they have to refile, and then they have to renotice the board coming to the board. So it's not like you can get backed into a corner where your hands are tied, where you can say, oh, we can't make the renotice, how do we stop them from bringing us down Primm Rose Path for six, seven, eight, nine months? With, with lack of grounds for extending beyond that period. So that, there is, there is a mechanism that I use to deal with that situation. Doesn't happen often, but it does, that's, that's the remedy.
That was, that was the exact situation this was written for.
Yes. By the way, one additional thing that I want to bring to the board's attention, and it's a situation, I just had litigation over it up the board. If the board is not going to have a hearing, this board is very good, also the zoning board, in terms of announcing the next day of the hearing, when applications are going to be held. The one that I had up north, the board adjourned it, they let us know they were adjourned the hearing, they didn't have more. They posted a notice on the door, and that was the issue on appeal, because there really was nothing in municipal land use law, there's no case law. Court found in our favor that posting of that notice was sufficient. It's not a published decision. So I think it may be worth the board's time to make a recommendation to mayor council, codify what they want to do in the event there's not going to be a hearing, what the board should be doing. I think properly, the board should at least open a meeting, announce that it's going to be adjourned, that by far is the safest way to do it. And then announce the adjourned date. But I think at the least, there should be some direction to the board, how they should act if you're not going to have a hearing, procedure for your, take care of that.
There, there is procedure, but how can the board act if there's no quorum?
Then you're going to have to post a notice, and that's the issue. Typically, we, we.
We post.
Over the years, what we've developed, Barbara and everybody else, A, there's always a notice posted on the board. B, there's a notice now going out on your website.
It's in the Bible.
And it is usually, it's usually a number of days prior.
Yeah, you, there's, there's.
Not that day.
More than one step that's taken.
Yes.
And anybody that's on that night, there's phone calls been made, emails today, of course, concerning, or the matters being canceled due to weather, or whatever it is, we're not going to have a meeting. But if you want to codify it, we can either do it in bylaw, if it's not there, put it in, or if you want to do it by order, you can do that too.
I don't know, I, I see that, that we, I personally think that we have that very well under control.
Yeah, no one's ever complained ever.
No, I've never had that.
People who said that, they're thankful that we really were staff work, so we get out the notice.
Yeah, Barbara, I mean, we always decide with Barbara as to what's going to happen, and she takes care of it, and.
One hundred percent, this board has been very adept. I just wanted the board to be aware that here, that issue has come up. Would you want to go into bylaws?
We can put in the bylaws, because, because we adhere to it anyway, so if we're making other changes to the bylaws, we can put that in there too.
Well, I want you, I may, send an email to the law, the bylaw committee, as to what the standard procedure is for that, and then hash it out if you want to strange it.
Yeah, because we were, we were going to be making some changes to the bylaws anyway, we can put that in there also, at the same time, whenever that is. But, yeah, we, we haven't been struggling with that in any way.
Can I ask a question of the public?
Of the public?
Could I?
Of the witness.
Yeah, witness.
Absolutely, yeah.
You, you. You, you mentioned that in our case, the professionals' reports sometimes come out two days before the meeting. And I agree with you that it would make more sense if that deadline was pushed up to a week before the meeting. However, that would add more time, as an applicant, you would need to get the application filed a little bit sooner to make a certain meeting date, four weeks.
That would turn, it's three weeks now, it would go to four weeks.
Is that something that?
To get the reports ahead of time, I'd be fine with that. You know, we get, listen, as an applicant, you know, you're rushed to get it to your professionals, and everybody's busy, so you got to make time to be able to talk, compare it once you get it. I think the more time we have to be able to review those reports, to be able to address the issues that are in the reports, I think it's better.
I don't think that's in the city code, I think that's just your operational.
Bylaws.
No, I've always, every town I've ever worked in, it's been four weeks.
Yeah, because, I was on the planning board in another town, and we always had all the materials at least a week before the meeting, including the reports, so that might be a nice thing to think about.
Look at you make a policy. There you go. Thank you.
Okay. All right, where do we, where do we go next?
Good evening, Anthony D. Moore with Sacman Enterprises. I just want to address one of the paragraphs in the performance and maintenance guarantees. It's paragraph C, which is regarding temporary certificate of occupancy guarantee. So I just wanted to make a comment, just get a clarification on exactly what the temporary certificate of occupancy guarantee is. So normally, when we do a development, sometimes it's stretching on a larger project, where you have different phasing in place. You'll ask for TCOs for different floors, for different sections of a building, for site improvements you can't complete. So we already place a performance guarantee with that project, and as we complete phases, we'll ask for bond reductions in those phases as we complete them. I just want to understand what the temporary certificate of occupancy guarantee entails and what it covers, because one of the, the sentences says, items which are not covered by an existing performance guarantee. So to me, that's a little ambiguous, I don't know if there's any way we can kind of define that a little bit better, or is this more, is this more a redundancy-type issue? It is?
It's, this was one of the bad things about the state law, that this, when we were writing this, and we reviewed this, I also reviewed the state law for the leading municipalities, it made no sense, because you're posting your hundred and twenty percent for the whole project, but now it's like, okay, you're doing a little bit, now you've posted hundred and twenty percent for the remaining.
Right.
It's redundancy. There's no actual applicable way to enforce this, but the state law said to put it in.
Is this only going to apply to site improvements?
Anything that's not covered under the performance and maintenance, so site improvements.
So it's not anything inside the building?
No, I don't believe so, no. Because that's not covered under guarantees now.
It's not, correct. Okay, all right. That's it. Thank you.
Actually, one question. And I, sorry. For new occupancies, does the city anywhere else have a definition of a new occupancy? Because I'm thinking, like, in a world of short-term rentals, there would be.
Yes, that's where it is.
Right, so anything that we're codifying that says new occupancy, we just, I think want to give a lot of thought to how that's defined.
New occupancy is any new use. It's not, you know, as Mr. Charis had said, you know, a kid coming home from college or a new baby, it's the actual use of the property, short-term rental. And that's referenced elsewhere, which wasn't part of the change, so it wasn't redlined. But if someone changes a tenant, if Sacman Enterprises changed a tenant, they would go through the new occupancy process, and, you know, it's, it's a restaurant, if the restaurant is permitted in the district and a cat cafe is not, they would, someone would come in for the cat cafe. That's where, it's a zoning permit, basically.
Okay, I just want to make sure that elsewhere, it is addressed. Okay.
All right, so, anybody else? All right, so where do we go from here, Jack?
Well, I think Mr. Kepian could have taken some notes. And we can put in a written resolution after backup, what he said, see if he wants to come and see board.
Okay.
Those are the interim, he won't have to wait for us, he can do what he has to do on his end. I will get resolutions out as we get them off.
All right, so then, so then the suggestions from the board, Michael has, what do we do with, then we have discussed the public?
Yeah, I mean, it's up to the board. Is the board going to make any further recommendations based on the comments, just how the public? I have already the comment regarding the time required to request an adjournment, that language.
Dot, yep.
Bylaws.
Yeah, we're going to put that in the bylaws.
Procession procedure, which is already in place, but we're going to codify it by putting it in the bylaw. There was another item that we mentioned about going into the bylaws, bylaws.
The four weeks before, rather than three.
Right.
And the notification of meeting cancellations.
Right, I have that.
Right.
And then I think it, it would be, the board recommends that the city review, Mr. Charis's definition wants. definition was altered, defined, I think you're okay with occupancy now? And then whatever comments Mr. Henry provides.
They're going to add that to that.
Within the next, I would ask that they get to us in the next week.
Okay, so Jim, we can get that for the inconsistencies that you've seen, if we can get that, that'd be great. Anybody else? Okay?
Yeah.
So two of the things that you mentioned were the, that the one letter identifying all the things that didn't signify completeness of the application, and then also a request for items that were beyond what was on the checklist, is that something like a procedural?
Well, then that's something, perhaps that's something that we need to add to the checklist.
That'd be internal operation.
That's internal. I think that, well, I think it makes sense.
Yeah, man, I think they're good.
That all those, all those items be put on the checklist as opposed to it going outside that.
So how do we do that?
Yeah, I'll take that. So how- I think it's really a policy decision, I'm understanding the issue correctly, as it's framed, I think it's a policy issue that there should be either the end or ordinance or bylaw that, well, it's going to be in the bylaws because we don't deal with completeness. That's done by the internal staff.
The board.
So, okay. So it would be that, you know, you've got 45 days to deem an application, basically. When you submit a letter, when you get a letter, I know as an I as an attorney, when I've represented applicants before, these boards before, I became board attorney on boards, you don't want to get what Andy said, you want to see every, you know, do a complete review. When, when I see a subsequent review, that means that somebody looked at it a second time and missed something the first time.
Right.
Or perhaps it went out to the planner or the engineer and they brought this up and it wasn't fully vetted before it was deemed complete. So it's really a matter of policy procedure that says, before you issue a letter or a completeness or lack of completeness, and if it's not complete, then the reasons why, you should do a thorough completeness review, do not, don't do it on a piecemeal basis, because that's counter-
I think, I think it makes sense.
So the second item, request for items beyond what was identified on the checklist, I mean, is that because it didn't, the item helped clarify something that was required on the checklist? I mean, that seems just kind of arbitrary.
It is arbitrary as well. Well, it's a double edged sword, because there may be something that the checklist covers, but then something may go over, I don't know, right here, that goes to the planner. The planner says, you know, I really do need, I need more than this to really give an intelligent if it's coming on the board office. And that goes to, for the benefit of everybody, the board and the applicant, because if it's, it comes back, look, it's incomplete, but-
Well, that, I mean, that seems like that would be more related to their, reviewing their, their report and telling the applicant, okay, this report doesn't have the information that we need versus not having something on a checklist, is that?
Well, Jim, maybe I can give you my two cents on this, and I'm not, you know, I don't know what goes on before it comes to my office, so it comes to my office and we can leave it. But in, in doing completeness reports, there's the things that are on the checklist, and that, there may be things that are depicted or proposed that require more detail in the checklist than asked for.
Right, in some cases, you're right, right.
And you would say, well, this is, you know, they've, they've shown this line on here and they call it a wall, let's say, but there's no elevation, there's no top wall, bottom wall, spots, but there's grading plan, because all you say is grading plan. And you could say, that's a grading plan, it could have a little bit of stuff on it, but unless you have deep, more detail in your checklist, it says a grading plan, it wants to have spot elevations in every corner and so. So it's reasonable that you could say, well, by the checklist, you're complete, however, until we have this, we can't fully evaluate your plan. That's, that's reasonable to do.
Yeah.
And then you get into a, well, is the applicant going to provide it, or are you going to have to schedule them, because you've got a clock running now? So it's, it's, it's not, it's more art than science sometimes when it comes to that, but you have to abide by the checklist than what it says in terms of its completeness determination in starting that clock. And the other stuff can be worked with the schedule, like, let's say that, you know, Andy had a client came in and he said, listen, we see this, there's this thing you're doing, and we need more information, because nobody's going to be able to understand this, including the public. And they say, well, you know, we just don't feel we're going to do it, not that Andy would ever say that, but, and you say, well, until, we're not going to schedule you until you do it, and by the way, we're going to deem you complete, and at the end of that, we're just going to, we're going to carry you and then we're going to deny you if you don't do it. So that gets into something like that.
Yeah.
That seems reasonable.
It does seem reasonable.
This doesn't seem like it's a conflict with what the checklist requires, I mean, that's further into it.
I think, I think what I'm hearing is, is getting, they're getting conflated, and that's the problem.
Right.
Like, you've got to keep them very distinct, and that's what Andy's saying, if you ask for things beyond that, it could be, it's not necessarily arbitrary, but someone could claim it's arbitrary, and what you really want to do is make sure you have effective information, so that we don't get to a hearing and you're reading, you know, Jason's report or Doug's report, and they're saying, well, there's 50 things we've got to say even though this is complete, we can't give you an opinion. You don't want to come here to a meeting and not be able to make a decision, right?
Absolutely.
You know, the way I come at these is that, if you're going to have a meeting, you're having a meeting because you're going to decide something, and if you don't have enough information to decide something, don't have a meeting.
Absolutely.
So you're suggesting expanding the, the, the letter?
Checklist?
Checklist?
No. I'm not suggesting that, I think the checklist have been worked over a little bit and, and updated.
Well, I mean, is there, is there, like a caveat?
But I don't think it says, okay, the checklist is complete, however, you know, it- You can't, no, you can't do that. You can't do that. You've got to, you've got to- You can say that, it's not going to stop you from deeming it complete, they need the checklist.
Right, but just let them know that, but, you know, your report that you get to the planner-
The checklist does not speak to technical sufficiency, let's say that.
Mm-hmm.
That's true.
I like that statement.
Would part of those issues be resolved, okay, you have more time to respond to the professional reports? Right, like we're saying they're going to get it earlier now, and we're just saying that you can wait for the season?
It's a catch 22, because if, it's a catch 22, because if they have enough time to respond, by the time they actually submit new information, the hearing's two weeks away, are we going to report in two weeks, and then, you know what I mean, so there's, so you want to, it's not something you can regulate hard, it's a fluid thing.
It is, and on behalf of that, which you want the board to have some question information as, and to have full view of what's happening, what you're proposing, what you're seeking to do. But, and, you know, one good procedure that is played now is when you put your initial application in, you know, to submit the plans, the full-size plans, all the composite plans, you know, 16 in total, it's a lot of money, it's a significant effort. One good thing that the board does right now, they require five or these sizes, look at it for completeness review, you're not spending the money on the big plans.
Right.
Just creating stacks of paper everywhere. But the important thing is, everybody should look at those plans, get back their comments, so we can respond to that timely, so the board has enough time to review it, if I don't have enough time to review it, all the information is there as close as possible. It is certainly appreciated. Checklist isn't going to cover every single thing, lines and this and that, that the board may need and will be able to review an application, professionals miss that, they didn't think it was important, it is important, those things can be then filled in, provide for a complete application. But it's the other things that are more, I'm sure, that are important.
Well, what we're trying to make sure that, that what was suggested was about being able to get everything as much as we possibly can at once, as opposed to piecemeal, which makes perfect sense, so that, so that you can, the applicants can have enough time in order to look at it. It saves time all the way around.
I understand.
I think there's, there's two issues, is that, one, the, the subjectiveness of the checklist and completeness isn't really for this ordinance as, as proposed, but if you, as the board, get complaints as an applicant is before you saying that, we felt that this shouldn't have been, we shouldn't have had to do this, then you need to tell the city manager position, and then say, can you look at this, how is this being, is it, was the director of planning's decision to not deem this complete valid? Is it something like, Mr. Sullivan has said that, oh, there's a line on the piece of paper, it says wall, but what kind of wall is it? Is it sticks and stones, or is it brick? Where that's where, you know, you're really going to look at the difference of it.
So it's not really in this, in this particular ordinance?
I don't believe, because it's what is complete, that's at the end of the day, it's what's complete.
That's a different definition. Okay.
Complete and technically sufficient are two.
Yeah, yeah. All right, so are we okay? Do we have what we need?
Yeah, and based on, if you don't comment, it's based on that, the board has a resolution that suggesting that the mayor council, city manager, consider the comments made, when you visit the ordinance amendments, and what's been suggested, what's, what's before you, plus the comments being imposed would be consistent with the rest.
So our-
No inconsistencies would not be inconsistent.
So our next meeting is October 24th, is that?
Second.
October 22nd, is that enough time to, I mean, we may not have a resolution until then, right?
I don't, I don't think any, I'm sitting right here.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, Michael, he's going to work simultaneously.
The big thing is, is Mr. Henry getting his comments.
Right, these are comments.
We, we have a council meeting Wednesday, which is on for adoption, because we, that's how we do the agenda, so we'll, I'll request the council a table, table it, and if Mr. Henry can get his, his major comments by next Monday, we have it for October 12th.
Right, because these are comments that, these are comments.
Send an email to the chair, just saying that these, so that, what you're saying is what we all think is going to be said.
Yep.
That's it, and this way we can double track it, rather than wait till 22nd of the citizens.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, your motion.
Do what Jack said.
Yeah, to do what Jack said.
Yeah, let's move to do what Jack said.
You made the recommendations that are stated to the mayor council, and that you reviewed the ordinances as proposed and as, with the changes that you've made, and you find them to be not inconsistent with the city.
I move toward Mr. Serpico to see that.
Second.
Councilman Martin Clayton.
Yes.
Mayor John Ward.
Yes.
Ariane Towery.
Yes.
Michael Nazzella.
Yes.
Charlie Barilla.
Yes.
Truzy Syfax.
Yes.
Alexis Taylor.
Yes.
Rick Lambert.
Yes.
Yes. All right.
I did.
Mike.
Thank you.
I require a public notice, because this was an eternal thing that the board did as a control factor, and I see no reason that we would have to have public input on whether or not we decide to extend.
I wasn't on the board when this application was approved, was there a specific reason with the deadline? Was it-
To ensure that we moved it forward.
Okay.
So that-
Okay, I agree.
It was, it was to move it.
Okay.
I think that was something that the applicant suggested.
Yes, absolutely.
They wanted to move it forward.
Right.
They wanted to move it forward too.
I wasn't here, as I said, and I'm not going to permit that statement to be put on the record, because we have two years, plus three-year extensions, but we want to build it. There's no question we want to build it, we want to comply with everything that you've approved, we don't want to be caught in the middle.
So what are you asking for?
September. Amendment to that condition to extend it to September 30th, 2019, another year.
Nine more months.
That's a year.
Yeah.
Well, it's a year from now.
September 30th, 2019, or December?
September.
September.
It's a year from now.
A year from now, it is nine more months after the deadlines.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so procedurally, we just, what we have to do here, so-
Somebody make a motion, a second of a-
Amendment.
To amend?
Condition 18B from December 31st, 2018, to September 30th, 2019.
I move that we amend condition 18B from December 31st, 2018, to September 30th, 2019.
Second.
That's really about, like-
Yes.
Yes.
Ariane Towery.
Yes.
Yes.
Michael Nazzella.
Yes.
Truzy Syfax.
Yes.
Alexis Taylor.
Yes.